Good morning, everyone. This is the Committee on Public Safety and City Council, and we will begin our public hearings. Joining me today are Council President Clark, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Jim, and Councilman Gim. I do that. Every time I do that, you get lunch. Okay? And Councilman, it's on record, Councilman Tollenberger. Will the clerk please read the titles of the bills to be heard today?
Bills to be heard today are 160517, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 10600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Places Prohibited Conduct by adding a new section 10615 entitled Disorderly Conduct and Related Offenses to prohibit certain types of disorderly conduct, disorderly public conduct, and to provide for penalties all under certain terms and conditions. 160333, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 10800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Safety by amending Section 10820 entitled Cutting Weapons in Public Places by excluding certain emergency personnel from the prohibition on the use of possession of cutting tools. And 160331, An Ordnance Amending Section 10834 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Responsibility to Avoid Possession and Discharge of Firearms by Children by Requiring Safe Storage of Firearms and Ammunition All Under Certain Terms and Conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Before we begin our hearing, we have the distinct pleasure of hearing from President Clark, who is the author of one of the bills.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to say, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for continuing to be an advocate for the people, particularly around public safety measures. Your recent chairing of the criminal justice reforms will bear some significant fruit. I just want to publicly thank you for the great work you've done on that. Also, your continued efforts on dealing with gun violence in our streets. Real briefly, before you start the rest of the bill, I just want to say that the bill that we have authored with respect to possession of weapons for young children is clearly something that needs to happen. I think we're up to around 23 children nationwide that have gotten access to weapons and have shot either themselves or members of the family. That is something that can be prevented. That is also something that I don't see why any gun rights advocacy groups would have problems with that bill. We're not talking about keeping guns away from those individuals per the Constitution, but we're talking about keeping guns away from young children. So I want to thank you all for your support on this particular measure. I think it's way past time that we enact something in the city of Philadelphia to make sure that young people don't get access to these weapons. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Now, thank you, Mr. President, for continuing your commitment to gun safety. Gun proliferation in our community is at epidemic proportions, and we're glad that you keep this on our radar since I've been here. In '07, it's been one of your priorities. And in spite of lawsuits, in spite of the NRA, in spite of all that, you keep coming back. So maybe they need to get the message that we're not going away on this issue. Thank you so much. Ms. Williams, can you please read the first group to testify?
Testimony will be on the first bill, 160517, Captain Francis Healy and Julie Wertheimer.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Please approach the witness table. One second. I'm sorry. Would any other members of the committee like to make any statements about any of the bills? No? Thank you.
The first? After you.
All right.
That's what I like, collegiality. Somebody ought to start up. Hold on, please. Councilman Tollenberger.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm talking on Bill 160333, and that is allowing fire personnel to carry the weapons of, they're not weapons, they're tools of their trade with them at any time. I believe strongly that this will encourage additional safety because they will have them with them, and I'm very glad to author this, but along with yourself, Councilman Jones, and Councilman Dom, Councilman O'Neil, and Councilwoman Gim. And I look forward to the testimony.
Thank you, Councilman. An ounce of common sense goes a long way, believe it or not, in government. Thank you. Now you may begin your testimony. State your name for the record.
Julie Wertheimer.
Please begin.
Good morning, Chairman Jones and members of the Public Safety Committee. My name is Julie Wertheimer, and I'm Chief of Staff for the Deputy Managing Director for Criminal Justice. The Managing Director's Office is here to offer a testimony in support of Bill Number 160517, which amends Chapter 10600 of the city code to include a new section 10615 entitled Disorderly Conduct and Related Offenses to prohibit certain types of disorderly conduct and to provide penalties all under certain terms and conditions. The intent of this bill is to decriminalize certain low-level public conduct offenses in public places. It will effectively prevent approximately 10,000 new incidents per year from entering the criminal justice system by permitting the Philadelphia Police Department to address disorderly public behavior through a civil system. Currently, the police department issues approximately 10,000 low-level criminal summary citations per year for public conduct offenses as violations of the Pennsylvania State Criminal Code. Most often, the police are issuing these criminal citations for public disorder-type behaviors such as disorderly conduct, failure to disperse, and obstructing the highway. Because these offenses are currently cited as violations of the state criminal code, violators obtain a criminal record and ultimately enter into our criminal justice system. For example, if an individual does not pay their fine or appear for their hearing, a bench warrant is issued, seriously increasing the likelihood of future incarceration for that individual. In its current form, the city code restricts the use of civil citations by the police department based on the place where the offense occurs. Police have the authority to issue civil citations in place of public assembly, such as stadiums or concert halls. However, in most public encounters outside of these venues, law enforcement officers have no civil alternative to subjecting these low-level violators to the criminal justice system. This bill will give police officers the option to respond to disorderly public behavior by issuing a civil citation rather than subjecting people to the criminal justice system and all of the negative collateral consequences that often come with it. For certain encounters, the police department will be able to issue a code violation notice, or CVN, which provides a lesser penalty similar to a traffic ticket. Philadelphia's goal to reduce our local jail population by 34%, an effort supported by the MacArthur Foundation's Safety and Justice Challenge grant, will help the administration, along with its criminal justice partners, are exploring methods or strategies that will allow the police to maintain public order and safety while reducing the flow of individuals into the justice system. One of the major initiatives under the MacArthur grant is to increase opportunities for pre-arrest aversion, limiting an individual's contact with the system, and reducing the negative effects that an arrest or incarceration can have on an individual who poses little or no threat to public safety. Expanding the applicability of the Philadelphia city code for disorderly conduct offenses is part of the solution, and we believe will significantly reduce the number of individuals that come into contact with the criminal justice system for low-level, nonviolent behavior. This goal is also in line with the work and the purpose of City Council's Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform led by you, Chairman Jones. Furthermore, this bill will enhance the police department's ability to respond to nonviolent incidents that may occur during the Democratic National Convention this summer without unnecessarily overwhelming our justice system. Police department is motivated to both maintain public safety during the convention and to preserve the First Amendment rights of individuals to protest. It is expected that law enforcement may have to use their authority to maintain control of the crowds during the convention. This bill will allow police to issue the civil code violation notice rather than a criminal citation or arrest for some disorderly behaviors. This will eventually decrease the involvement police need to have with individuals during the convention while preserving their discretion to intervene more significantly if public safety is at risk. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Bill Number 160517. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
If it pleases the committee, I'd like to let the second witness testify before we ask questions. Thank you.
Right, sir. Good morning, Chairman Jones and members of the Committee on Public Safety. My name is Captain Francis Healy, and I'm a special legal advisor to Commissioner Ross. On behalf of the Commissioner, thank you for allowing the department to voice its opinion on this very important piece of legislation, Bill Number 160517. Evidence surrounding the concept of procedural justice suggests that fair decision-making and respectful treatment of the police can enhance the trust or legitimacy of the police within the communities, which then promotes greater law-abiding behavior. This theory suggests that the way police interact with people, including suspects, has a bearing on whether they feel valued as a part of society. While experiences of fair treatment help build that sense of group identity and shared values, unfair police treatment erodes feelings of public trust and sends out a strong signal to citizens that they are not valued and that the rules do not apply to them. Therefore, under Commissioner Ross, the police department will actively and continuously review policies, procedures, and training to identify methods or techniques that will instill and enhance the accountability and legitimacy of the police department. However, with the recent decriminalization of marijuana in the city, certain unintended consequences have occurred that undermine this trust and legitimacy which Commissioner Ross believes must be addressed. Specifically, low-level state summary disorderly conduct type offenses now carry a more serious penalty for Philadelphia citizens than possessing marijuana. This is inherently unfair. While the responsibility of the police department is to enforce laws fairly, it is also our responsibility to stand up against laws that are unfair. So the department has collaborated with the Managing Director's Office and reached out to this bill's sponsors, Councilman Jones, I'll put yourself, for help to develop a solution. Bill Number 160517 is that solution. By amending the city code to include the most cited state disorderly conduct offenses, officers in Philadelphia will be permitted to issue code violations in lieu of state charges for disorderly conduct, failure to disperse, and obstructing highways or other passageways. Consequently, the impact on violators would at least be on par with the marijuana changes. It is a fair and procedurally just solution that will help build trust and legitimacy of the police who are tasked with enforcing these laws within the communities we serve. This is only a step in the process, but a very important step forward. For the above-mentioned reasons, the police department fully supports this bill, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Before I go to Councilman Tollenberger, a couple of things. So I've been contacted in a chance meeting by the owner of the Oregon diner, and he says there's a gentleman that routinely decides to take advantage of his location to publicly drink. In a case like that, what we would do in that scenario versus something that's coming up in my district, which is the bike race, public drinking was an issue. We managed to calm that down. Some drastic steps we took were with, for lack of a better word, a drunk court up in the 5th District, and it calmed things down. It sent a signal so that now all we have to have is the folk from liquor enforcement walking around publicly, and folk kind of have been conditioned to act responsibly. So give me a couple of those scenarios on what the leeway of an officer would be today versus...
Well, let me just go by way of analogy of a scenario that's happened as a result of the marijuana. You have a juvenile smoking marijuana on the corner, standing there with his buddy, who's also 16, 17 years old, and he's drinking a beer. Police officers come on scene, the individual with the marijuana now gets a citation and is released, basically. However, the individual drinking, underage drinking, drinking a beer, quite frankly, is now going to be cited under the state code disorderly, or I'm sorry, drinking, underage drinking. He'll have to have a court attendance, he'll have to court fines and fees, he'll have a record, his license will be suspended for three months. And in par, we, as a department, thought that was inherently unfair. And the community knows what's fair and what's not, so they really get it. And so this is incredibly important for us to be able to look at, you know, honestly look at the community in the eye and say, "What we're trying to do is be fair with you." So we want to be able to take enforcement action, but we're not looking to overly criminalize nuisance-type behavior that could actually saddle you for the rest of your life, quite frankly.
What impact will that have on our overcrowding of the system in your projections? How many arrests do...
Well, I'll be very honest. This is at the front end of the entire criminal justice system, but the issue, a lot of these individuals don't get into, they obviously don't go to jail for these type of things, but there are such low-level offenses that many people forget to go to court, or they just ignore court, or juveniles just don't tell their parents, and next thing you know, they have bench warrants issued for them. So they actually get into the system in that regard, where next thing you know, they get scooped up three, four, or five years later on a car stop, and next thing you know, they have a bench warrant for them. They don't even remember what the bench warrant's for, but nonetheless, they get brought into the process in that regard, which, like I said, these are people that don't belong in the criminal justice system, per se. These are petty disorderly-type offenses, and the city code, I think, is a more appropriate vehicle to actually, for the penalty, especially now that marijuana is in that realm. It makes no other sense than to put these violations at that level as well.
So in an event like the bike race, or even worse, when the, at the Man Music Center, the Deadheads come out, and they stay several days in tents, what would be the scenarios...
Well, the essence for the police officer is very, very little difference, okay? Because it's a piece of paper. It's one piece of paper for one goes in one direction to a criminal court, one's going to go to a civil fine. So there's really no dramatic impact on the police department on how they're going to be able to police these events, but the ability, the efficiency of being able to process individuals faster will be there. With the CVN, it's basically, it looks like a parking ticket. We're looking to enhance that, quite frankly, specifically for the police department, make it easier for the officer, but it'll be a very quick procedure where the individual will be given fines, and then an opportunity, I believe, if they pay early with the system, they actually pay less.
So I guess what I'm looking for is, there is a difference between public drunkenness or drinking and an exposed container or something like that, but disorderly conduct is a discretionary component that the officer can...
Correct. Well, we use the exact same terminology, so as we don't confuse apples and oranges, very honestly. We use the exact same language that's in the state code. The officers know what disorderly conduct is as best as it can be defined, and I believe there's five different subsections of disorderly conduct: tumultuous behavior, fighting, and all those type of things. The officers are, now have the ability to actually use this code violation notice for this type of behavior.
So there's levels that they can graduate to depending on the specifics...
Correct.
...circumstance.
Correct.
Councilman Tollenberger?
Thank you. As I see it, in the testimony that you have given, and I thank you very much for that testimony and your service as a whole, this just is another tool, a very efficient tool, I believe, correct me if you think I'm wrong, in that police officer can use this at his or her discretion, with that position, of course, happening, you know, the public being prohibited from using the footway, or someone being obnoxious to somebody else, without clogging up the system, the judicial system, and moving this along. Because I think sometimes just the fact that a ticket is written, or a citation is written, is really punishment enough in many cases. So, I mean, am I getting this right, that it is additional tool for efficiency?
You've got it exactly right. Plus, I'll be very, it's out of fairness, too. Like I said, the penalty for doing these type of violations should not exceed that of marijuana. Quite frankly, marijuana outside of Philadelphia is still a misdemeanor offense.
Yes.
So in theory, people doing summary offenses in Philadelphia are being penalized higher than committing theoretically a misdemeanor. So in the communities that we serve, they understand it's not fair. So I think this levels the playing field, and it gives us a lot of credibility. I mean, and the fact that we're not trying to overly criminalize this type of behavior, but we have to take action sometimes to control, and this is a very good, efficient alternative, and I think it will work well. The officers have been very receptive, and they've brought it forward and said they're really looking forward to this.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other questions, Councilman Gim?
Thank you very much. I'm also very supportive of this bill overall. One of the areas, though, that I wanted to ask a little bit about was the relationship between disorderly conduct and domestic violence situations, and whether there's any, you know, is there any overlap? Because I am interested in making sure that situations that involve domestic violence don't suddenly get ramped down in some way, and would just like your clarity on that a little bit, Captain.
2711 of the Pennsylvania Crimes Code allows us to make a warrantless arrest for a misdemeanor offense. Our officers have been trained and have been handling domestic violence for almost, I think, since 1994, 95, when the actual law got changed to expand the scope. So that allows officers to intervene. I don't know of any officer, quite honestly, that's going to misinterpret a domestic violence call where there's actually a battery that had happened as opposed to disorderly conduct. Disorderly conduct is happening in a public forum. Most domestic violences are happening in a residence, and they do make the arrests. We make quite a few arrests for domestic violence when we see the indicia of violence, and we will even make arrests when the victims are reluctant to testify. We go forward.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I really don't have a question, I just want to make comment first, both to you and Councilman Johnson for working on this bill and for the administration's efforts, but I just want to particularly commend the police department, because I think Captain Healy used the word fairness about 12 times while we were talking, and I don't think there's any better criteria for passing a law than it's fair. And I think this is fair to the citizens generally and to the people involved. So again, I commend everybody for their involvement in this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that comment. We agree. If there are no other questions for this panel, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
The next bill to be heard would be Bill Number 160333. The witnesses are Fire Commissioner Adam Teal and Michael Bresnan.
Thank you. And welcome to city government. Come in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I like that. He's so new, he's so new, he didn't know that. That's good. Welcome to city council. Is your first time testifying?
Yes, sir, it is. It's my first time wearing this uniform, so this is a day of firsts.
I saw you on TV the other day in it, I think.
We had a busy couple weeks.
On Memorial Day, right?
Yes, sir. We had a four alarm fire.
Yes, at the Vets Headquarters. Thank you for your service. Guys, you can state your name for the record and begin your testimony, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Adam Teal, the Commissioner of the Philadelphia Fire Department, here to testify in support of Bill 160333, captioning Cutting Weapon Exception for Fire and EMS Personnel. In my 17th day here on the job in the city of Philadelphia, I certainly have already been impressed by the city and definitely by the commitment of all of our fire and EMS providers. In order to do their jobs, and I should say that these folks are really on duty 24/7/365, even if they're not getting paid by the city, many of them are, of course, trained firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, and they often find themselves with a duty to act or in situations where they ethically feel like they have a moral obligation to help protect lives and property, even when they are not aboard a fire apparatus or an EMS vehicle. As a result, many of our members have made a habit, have been trained over the years to use a variety of cutting tools, anything ranging from pocket knives to, of course, the large, the jaws of life, the heavy extrication equipment that we use to disentangle people from vehicles, all manner of other incidents, whether it's a blimp that somehow manages to fall out of the sky, that's another one of the incidents over my first two weeks. We're also surrounded every day as our firefighters go through their operating environment. All of the cables, all of the wiring that you see in a fire situation that often falls down, and they are in a situation where they have to cut themselves out of being entangled. I myself once, off-duty, witnessed a vehicle crash and had to crawl inside the car and use my pocket knife to release somebody from the seatbelt in which they were entangled to get them out of a vehicle that was leaking fuel. And I know, we have Mike Bresnan, who's Vice President of our Local 22, and also Battalion Chief on our job here to talk about how our firefighters and EMS personnel use these tools on a daily basis. We certainly appreciate your efforts to ensure that they are doing that in full compliance with all applicable laws and regulations so they can continue their service 24/7/365. I've also submitted written testimony. Thank you.
Again, welcome to Philadelphia. Blimps falling from the skies, fires on Memorial Day, welcome to Philly.
Thank you, sir.
We'll retain questions until after this panel testifies. Thank you. Pull your mic to you and state your name.
For the record, I'm Michael Bresnan. I'm the second Vice President of Local 22. I'm also, as the Commissioner said, an active Battalion Chief. I work out of Old City. I'm here to support Bill 16033, and more importantly, to concur with my new boss.
Okay, was that it?
That's it.
All right. Short and sweet.
I'm here to answer any questions.
You're going to be popular with at least one council.
Mr. Chairman, that doesn't always happen, but I appreciate that.
I want to recognize Councilman Johnson being here, and we do officially have a quorum. Are there any, oh, Councilman Tollenberger?
Yeah, I just have one very, very simple question, and also a comment. Commissioner Teal, officially, welcome to the city of Philadelphia from myself, and we look forward to working with you, and you're a great department, and I think working with you, the department has even an opportunity to become greater yet. So when it comes to the safety of our citizens, anything we can do to enhance that, I want to be there, which is the reason for authoring the following bill. The question I have is, upon passage and this being implemented, one, do you think more personnel might now carry their tools with them, which will open up for greater safety of the public?
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Tollenberger, I'm not sure we have a good sense of how many of our members are currently carrying or using cutting tools on and off-duty. On-duty, of course, we're surrounded by them. All the vehicles you see, all the fire apparatus, our medic units are loaded with various types of cutting tools, from specialized to the very simple, you know, pocket knife-type devices. Candidly, it's probably something that we have a lot of folks already so equipped, and I'm not sure how this will potentially affect that, their deployment of those devices. But we certainly think, again, that our members want to help 24/7/365. I think our city has seen that over and over, and I expect this will certainly have people, will be thankful to be able to be well-equipped, both on-duty and off-duty.
Well said, and that concludes my questioning at this moment. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. One other question for the record. What neighborhood do you live in?
Mr. Chairman, I happily live in your district, sort of at the corner of, the corner of Mannyunk and Roxborough, you know, I don't necessarily want to commit, but I'm very happy to live along the Schuylkill Navigation Company canal, and I'm not there very often right now, but I am looking forward to enjoying the neighborhood.
Sorry, we know where to find you.
As we get into the bike race.
We appreciate you choosing the 4th District, and we do potholes on Tuesday, two for one. All right? Are there any other questions for this panel?
Councilman, I just got one, I just wanted to add it to the Commissioner. Firefighters and EMS personnel, just like police officers, we take an oath of office, and once we take that oath, that's for life, on or off-duty, and our instincts are to act. And I was telling Councilman earlier, this wasn't even a human being, this was a dog. I remember I was off-duty one time, I had my folding knife in my pocket, kid left his dog outside the corner deli, a couple steps, the dog was wrapped around, at least was around its neck, it was actually hanging itself. If I didn't have that knife to cut it loose, you know, there was this one example where, you know, it isn't a human being, but like the Commissioner said, auto accidents, kids entangled and stuff, it's a tool, it's an essential tool that most guys I know carry, on, off-duty, to work, from work. So just for the record.
We know your oath, and we know that it takes a special kind of individual to run into danger, and so whatever tools you need to do that, I believe it is the will of this body to make sure you're adequately provided for. And I know I got one vote, because once you said the dog analogy, Councilman Johnson's big on pets, so, all right? Are there any questions? Not seeing none. Thank you for your service, and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you all.
Ms. Williams, who do we have next?
The next bill to be heard will be Bill Number 160331. The witnesses are Captain Francis Healy, Shear Goodman, and Scott Charles.
Thank you, guys, for your patience. Please approach the witness table again, and in whatever order you wish. Bring the mic to you, state your name for the record, and begin your testimony.
Do you want to go first?
Pardon?
So many polite people today.
We will flip a coin if you can.
He's going to go first. Captain Healy's going to start.
I won't say anything about fairness. I'm kidding. For the record, good morning, Chairman Jones and other members of the Committee on Public Safety. My name is Captain Francis Healy. I'm Special Advisor to Commissioner Ross. On behalf of the Commissioner, thank you for allowing the department to testify on Bill Number One Six Zero Three Three One regarding storage requirements for firearms and ammunition in the City of Philadelphia.
Hold a second. I just know the President, the author of this bill, will probably want to join us. Yeah. And if you could hold a second.
Yes, sir.
He doesn't get an opportunity to actually sit at the table much, so we want to allow He's trying to figure out how to add up the sugar tax, so we can proceed.
Very well. The intent of this legislation is clearly to prevent death and serious injuries to children from guns, family homes of lawful gun owners in Philadelphia. For this reason, the Philadelphia Police Department applauds both Council President Clark and Councilman Johnson for introducing this legislation, and the Philadelphia Police Department fully supports this intent. We agree that locking devices should be provided upon every sale or transfer of a firearm. Such devices are now required under state law in the Pennsylvania Crimes Code, Section Sixty-One Forty-Two. Nonetheless, oftentimes, these locking devices are not used by firearm owners. So the Police Department supports the additional protections of requiring all unattended guns to be stored in a locked container. However, the department would be remiss if it did not acknowledge that the language in the bill could be problematic and controversial. That said, the department is prepared to assist in any effort to overcome any of these obstacles. The intent of this bill is to save the lives of children. On this point, no one can argue that guns do not belong in the hands of unsupervised children. The Philadelphia Police Department stands committed to working with all interested parties on this issue to develop common sense laws to protect our children. Gun ownership is a right in this country, and with all rights come great responsibilities. For most gun owners, this is not an issue, but for the few, regrettably, legislation such as this is needed. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill Number One Six Zero Three Three One, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
We'll continue the procedure of allowing the table to testify before we open up with questions. Anyone next?
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Sheera Goodman. I'm the Executive Director at Ceasefire PA. We are a statewide organization, working with mayors, police chiefs, city councils, faith leaders, community organizations, and individual Pennsylvanians to take a stand against gun violence. We thank you for this opportunity to be here today, and we thank Council for its ongoing efforts to fight gun violence and gun tragedies. This Council has been a leader, where sometimes in Pennsylvania, it has been hard to do so. So we appreciate your ongoing efforts to fight the gun violence and gun tragedies that plague our city and other cities, especially our youth. And we applaud Council President Clark for Bill One Six Oh Three Three One. This bill aims to create a safe storage, child access prevention ordinance for Philadelphia. Pennsylvania does not have such an ordinance, although twenty-seven other states in the District of Columbia do. And the data shows that these laws have been successful in reducing unintentional shootings, as well as suicides among young people. Unlock guns in the home do increase the risk for unintentional shootings, intentional shootings, and suicides. There are several studies that show that laws such as this do reduce the incidence of youth suicide attempts, as well as unintentional deaths among young people. Smartgunlaws.org, which is a website of the law center to prevent gun violence, details these studies and details the different kinds of laws that are, different states have passed. This bill sets forth what they would view as a stronger law. It gives penalties, criminal penalties, for adults who leave, who recklessly or knowingly give access, unsupervised access to a child of a gun. And it also has important exceptions and defenses to liability. We believe this will foster better storage and access, child access prevention policies and practices. And again, those practices have been demonstrated to be effective in reducing these unintentional shootings and suicides, as well as intentional shootings among young people. We think that imposing criminal liability can have an educational and a motivational effect. It can be teach adults how to do better. We often hear that gun owners do want to do the right thing. They just don't want to be told what to do. But we know that from the experiences of other jurisdictions, that sometimes having these laws in place can make a difference in saving lives. So we believe it represents a reasonable effort to prevent gun violence and gun tragedies involving Philadelphia's youth. We hope that the rest of the Commonwealth will follow Council's sound example.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're going to go with the last panelist, and then we will open up for questions.
Good morning, Chairman Jones and members of the Committee on Public Safety. My name is Scott Charles, and I'm the Trauma Outreach Coordinator for Temple University Hospital, where my primary role involves trying to reduce the number of firearm injuries that we treat at Temple specifically, as well as the injuries that are treated at other trauma centers more generally. One of the initiatives that I oversee at Temple is the Cradle to Grave Program, which has educated more than ten thousand young people about the medical and emotional realities of gun violence over the past decade. I also direct a program called Fighting Chance, which enlists hospital staff to teach first aid to residents living in communities suffering high rates of firearm injury. Finally, I run a program out of the hospital called Safe Bet, in which I distribute free gun locks to our gunshot patients, many of whom have children, grudges, and guns, but unfortunately, no gun locks. Some might consider it odd that a hospital would find itself in the business of distributing gun locks. When you think about it, however, it shouldn't really come as that big a surprise. Temple University Hospital treats more gunshot injuries than any other hospital in the State of Pennsylvania. In the eleven years that I've worked for the trauma department, we have treated more than five thousand patients for firearm injuries. In Philadelphia, firearm injury is the leading cause of death for young black men in the city. And combined, gun suicide and homicide represent the leading cause of death, outpacing even motor vehicle accidents for all Pennsylvania juveniles under the age of twenty-one. Simply put, juvenile firearm injury is a public health issue. I am aware that some might take exception to my referring to firearm injury as a public health issue. If you don't mind, I'd like to take you back to October sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, when Dr. Herb Cushing, Temple University Hospital's Chief Medical Officer, came before this distinguished group to discuss the significant efforts being made by our health system, as well as those being made by the city, state, and federal government, to address the threat posed by the Ebola virus. At the time, there were only three known cases of Ebola on American soil. In total, there have only been four diagnosed cases of Ebola in the U.S., and no one person has both contracted and died of the virus while in this country. Few, however, would argue that Ebola represents a legitimate public health issue. And today, those four cases have had a powerful effect on public health policy and practice. Now, if I might, I'd like to take you to the present to talk about why it is that we see this as a critical issue for us. Sandusky, Ohio, police investigating seven-year-old shot in the neck. Cumberland, Indiana, nine-year-old boy dies after being shot in the head near Indianapolis. Georgia, seven-year-old boy injured in accidental shooting in northwest Atlanta. Roanoke, Virginia, police say one child playing with guns shot and killed another child. Marshall County, Alabama, funeral set for ten-year-old killed in accidental shooting. La Place, Louisiana, La Place mourns the loss of five-year-old killed in accidental shooting. Colorado, Denver three-year-old wounded in accidental shooting. What I just read to you does not represent a year's worth of headlines. Rather, these are all cases of unintentional shootings of American children that happened just this past week. Closer to home of Philadelphia, second grader at Grover Cleveland mastery charter last week made national news when he brought a fully-loaded Glock handgun to school in the Tioga section of the city. The week before that, just outside the city, a Pennwood Middle School student was arrested after it was discovered he had stashed a forty-caliber handgun in his locker. Fortunately, neither of these local cases ended in tragedy, but many other children in many other cases are not so lucky. On average, a child unintentionally shoots him or herself or someone else in their home or vehicle at least every other day in this country. In fact, this year alone, nearly a hundred children have been involved in unintentional shootings as a result of having gained access to a firearm that was left unsecure and loaded. Despite the constant drumbeat of such tragedies, gun owners, and I account myself among them, continue to fail to take the steps necessary to prevent what is easily one of the most preventable forms of childhood injury that exists. One common assumption among gun-owning adults is that their children are unaware of the location of their firearms, and even if they did know, would never touch them. This assumption often leads to reckless firearm storage practices that can have lethal consequences. It has become increasingly evident that the possibility of losing a child alone is not sufficient motivation for some gun owners to properly secure their weapons. As a result, I support the passage of child access prevention laws such as this, and those that have proven to be effective in reducing accidental shootings of children by as much as twenty-three percent. Among states with highest levels of gun, child gun deaths, seven of ten do not have child access prevention laws. Among states with low levels of child gun deaths, seven of ten do have child access prevention laws. As a health professional who regularly witnesses the devastating effects that bullets have on the human body, as the parent of children who live near and attend school with the children of other Philadelphia gun owners, I support any legislation that might reduce the likelihood of firearms finding their way into the hands of individuals who are too young to appreciate the consequences of their actions. I thank you for your time, and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So first of all, thank you all for your testimony, and Ceasefire has been with us throughout this arduous ride, battling gun violence and trying to reduce the number of guns on the streets. So we thank you. Temple University is, dare I say, on the cutting edge of this unfortunate social phenomenon. You have the distinction of training more combat-ready surgeons because of your location at Temple. You have initiated a program where people that are witnesses to gun violence are being trained on how to do triage. And I had mixed emotions when I saw you on television, saying, yeah, it's a good thing, but dag on, how did we get here? So we appreciate that. The other thing, Temple is working on that study. Am I allowed to talk about the study you talked about?
I'm sorry.
Am I allowed to talk about the study?
Sure.
Okay. So you also are looking at when our emergency teams arrive on the scene, whether it is better to administer on the ride-in fluids and life-supporting techniques or to just quickly deliver. And only in Philadelphia or big cities like it do we have to think about those things. And our reality is such that everything that this panel is doing from you to Ceasefire is like so important to, unfortunately, the day-to-day life of being in a big city. So I want to thank you all for what you do. Couple questions. When we start to look at this legislation, you mentioned that you had some trouble with the wording. Without us getting analysis paralysis, what is your concern?
Regrettably, for better or worse, I've been involved with the gun, the pro-gun legislation, or, I'm sorry, not legislation, the litigation that usually comes at the City of Philadelphia. From that perspective, I have a unique way of looking at what they're, I can see what the issues they're going to have with this bill. The issue that they will have is that they can't, this is going to prevent, and this is, this will be their argument, that this prevents the individual homeowner from getting access to a loaded firearm quick enough to be useful enough to defend himself or his family, because you are requiring a unloaded gun to be stored, rather than just defining it as storing a firearm. That would be something that, would be something that could be worked out, I believe. I mean, the issue is making sure the gun, unloaded or not, is not accessible to children. And I honestly don't believe any gun advocate can argue that fact. Children, unsupervised children should not have access to firearms, period. They will agree that children need to be trained. I mean, we train people how to be safe with a lot of different things. We do nothing to teach children how to be safe with firearms, basically don't touch them. But if you do, how do you handle them and that kind of stuff? When you get old enough to be an older child, that's kind of training that helps reduce some of these type of issues. I can just say, anecdotally, I grew up in a police family. We had guns all over the house. My father was old highway from the sixties, so we had guns on every floor of the house. But I was also taught at a very early age how to safely handle every gun that was in that house. And so it was not a mystery to me. It was not, you know, when I found the gun, it was not a surprise. My godfather told me where it was at. That goes a long way, but that's not, I mean, like I said, that's very specific to law enforcement. But I think the issue of, I think you just have to address what the advocates will attack in this, and that's the right of the homeowner to defend himself. So I do believe there's latitude here that can be worked with, and I think it's a very positive step in the right direction. And the children, I guess there's, like I said, the tragedy this poor doctor sees, the tragedies that my officers carry in, and seeing baby shot is just a horrible sight to see, that no person should have to see, or a parent should have to witness.
I think about my childhood. Grew up with a kid around the corner named Cliffy. I won't use the last name. And one of his older brothers was involved with a burglary up at the Chuck Waggons on City Avenue. Too young to know where that was, but it happened. And it was a relic, and it was on the wall. And so they wound up stealing it, and it wound up in the basement of their home. Cliffy was about maybe ten or twelve, but he was a genius. He figured out how to rig the firing pin with a nail that he bent, so that it would hit the shells, and literally flipped up the gun, trying to fix it, and it killed him. I think common sense in legislation is important. You have to weigh the good with the bad, the intended and the unintended consequences. And if you have some suggestions by way of what we can do to strengthen this, I would appreciate it before we, final passage, but we're going to, I'm going to be inclined to pass it out of committee and let the forces of Trump come with whatever they're going to bring. All right?
But we're, the department's here ready to support and help in any way.
I appreciate it. Are there any questions? Councilman Tullenberger?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question that I have, and I'd like to also say, I'm very much in favor of this bill. I think it can work. Be interested if you have any thoughts on amendments, but I think it sends the right message. But last year, how many injuries, if this bill had been in place then, or even two years, would this have prevented? Would you guess? I'm not looking for exact numbers, but approximate numbers.
It's very hard to identify what didn't happen. I just think the, like I said, there's a lot of guns. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of guns in Philadelphia, legal and illegal.
Correct.
And regrettably, I don't know if this is going to impact the illegal gun holders, whether or not they're going to advocate putting their guns in lock boxes. But for the lawful gun owners, they probably already do. I mean, and that's the positive and responsible gun owners. But for the small few that don't, I think this is, regrettably, a necessary step. Like I said, children, there's no, there's nothing more we can do to prevent children. I mean, there's nothing that should stop us from doing anything, regardless of any preemption issues or anything. That's not a reason to not try. Any one child saved from this is great. I mean, but I do think you'll never hear about the ones where the kids couldn't get a hold of the gun. So I don't see there any downside to actually having, requiring a legitimate gun owner to lock his gun up, so his child doesn't get them, or another child. And that's the important thing, too, is there's a lot of children. It's one thing if your child knows what to do, but your child invites other people into your house, and a gun is a very curious object, and next thing you know, the neighbor's kids want to see what it is. And a lot of times, that's a slippery slope, and next thing you know, one child's shooting another accidentally. So I do believe it's a good idea. This is a very, very good idea.
We do know from other states that in nineteen ninety-seven, a study of the twelve states had had such a
a law for a year, unintentional firearm deaths for kids under 15 went down 23 percent between 1990 and 1994. And the 2004 study found that those kinds of laws were associated with an 8.3 percent decline in suicides, kids 14 to 17. So those are a little bit older, but the studies have found over time that there are reductions in youth deaths.
I mean, in many ways, if you save one life, you save all humanity, is an old saying, but, and I think it's true, but it's always good to get some numbers, and I thank you for that.
And if I might, Detroit is currently dealing with a rash of pediatric gun injuries. In fact, they're now looking at legislating this and cracking down on this issue, but that's as a result of nine kids being shot or killed over the last, I think, 14 months. Detroit didn't have a problem with this until they had a problem with this. You know, if we went back 16 months, you could ask that same question, and Detroit would probably say this really isn't that great a deal. You know, to this gentleman's point, it's not really just about lawful gun owners. We have a tremendous issue with illegal guns. But I also like to believe that when informed, those folks who might have illegal guns are willing, once they have the information, to take the necessary precautions, which is why I distribute gun locks at the hospital to men, young men predominantly, who might otherwise be prohibited from owning guns, but it's no questions asked. I'm not a law enforcement officer.
Sure.
But I'm interested in trying to preserve the lives of those kids that live in the house with those guns. So, and I find that they, over the last, I think, year, I've distributed 75 handgun locks to individuals who were wary about taking them initially until I described to them how common it is for young kids to shoot themselves with guns that are unsecured.
Thank you. I commend what you're doing, and all of you really, and appreciate your time and testimony today. Mr. Chairman, I thank you.
I would prevail upon you to give a briefing, ask Temple to give a briefing about some of the initiatives that Temple's doing. I would love to take the members up to the hospital just to get a look firsthand at what cutting-edge policies the hospital has. I think it's just evolutionary.
We'll make that happen.
And did you get to see the NIC? I recommend.
Oh, no, you do, you do listen.
All right.
It's on my to-do list. I have a mandate.
All right. Okay. All right. Councilwoman?
So I just wanted to also thank, you know, Dr. Charles and Ms. Goodman for your work in this area and elevating this issue fully and strongly in support of the bill. And also, Captain Healy, I think you brought up a great point that, you know, within trained families, you know, it's possible to teach young people how to use it. Unfortunately, Pennsylvania is a state that refuses to enact sensible gun legislation. And smart policies like asking people to, before they buy a gun, much as if they were to buy a car or drive a car, that there be some smart legislation about, demonstration of knowledge about how to use it. But the frank matter, the fact of the matter is, is that anyone can buy a gun, and they don't have to be trained to use it, they don't have to have any responsibility to train anybody else to use it, they can keep it in any kind of situation that they choose to see fit. And the lax and latitudeness of the law gives us some serious responsibility to think through what smart legislation looks like. And at the municipal level, I think it makes a big difference. We are not changing the way people acquire guns. We are changing the way that, we're taking a look at smart legislation that looks at storage within a home to protect children. And I do wish that our state would enact smart gun legislation. I wish that they would require training before someone would acquire a gun. I wish they would do a whole lot of other things. But absent that, I think we are very strongly doing the right thing here and moving forward on it, so thank you.
May I make one comment on that?
As to the training, I wholeheartedly agree, but the training I believe that should be mandated, this is my own personal opinion, is home firearm responsibility. Whether or not you can hit the side of a bar and shooting the gun, I could really care less about. I care less that you know how to properly secure, not shoot yourself, your family, or make sure that gun doesn't end up in the wrong hands. That's a home firearm responsibility, which I think is exactly on point with what you're stating, safe gun legislation. That's not impinging upon anybody's rights whatsoever, and I think it's just safe for everyone out there for that kind of legislation.
Well put, Councilwoman, and well responded, too. Common sense. Common sense. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, are there any other witnesses, Ms. Williams?
There are no more witnesses, Councilman.
Thank you. This will conclude our public hearing. We will go into our public meeting. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
We are now in our public meeting. The chair recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion on Bill Number 160517.
I move that this committee reports Bill 160517 with a favorable recommendation and further move to suspend the rules of counsel so as to permit first reading at the next session of council.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Bill Number 160517 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at our next session of council. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Bill Number 160517 will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation with a request that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading at our next session of council. The chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I move that this committee reports Bill 160333 with a favorable recommendation and further move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit first reading at the next session of council.
It has been moved and seconded twice, that, and properly seconded, that the Bill 160333 be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and further move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this bill at our next session of council. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Oh, all those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Bill Number 160333 will be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation with a request that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading at our next session of council. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion on the amendment to Bill Number 160331.
I move to amend Bill Number 160331.
It has been moved and properly seconded that an amendment to Bill 160331 be approved. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
The ayes, all those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. An amendment to Bill Number 160331 has been approved. The chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson for a motion on amended Bill 160331.
I move that this committee reports Bill 160331 as amended with a favorable recommendation and further move to suspend the rules of council so as to permit first reading at the next session of council.
It has been moved and properly seconded that Bill Number 160331, as amended, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and further move that the rules of council be suspended, permit first reading of this bill at our next session of council. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and motion, the motion carries for Bill Number 160331, as amended, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation and with a request that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading at our next session of council. This concludes the business of this committee of public safety for today. I thank you all very much for your attendance.